We'll have it next week, and I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act Statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice that this meeting was sent to the press in the current of Acorber Township. Notice is also delivered that day to the Acorber Township Clerk and posted on bulletin board at Township Hall.
Thank you, May. We have roll call.
Mrs. Delabarka?
Is Delabarka here?
Mr. Ellis?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer is virtual. Mrs. Swaggy?
Here.
Mrs. Bird?
Present.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay, at this point, we're going to stand for the flag salute. After we salute the flag, we're going to have a moment of silence for Alice Booth, one of our high school teachers, unfortunately, who passed away recently.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our August work meeting. Happy birthday to Ray. All right, everyone out there. And really, all I have to say to start our work meeting off is that, you know, job one right now, our main focus is our road back and having everything in place for a successful opening of school. We still don't know how that will look. It changes every day, but that is job one for us right now. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Gruccio for any reports.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August work session. The summer's just cruising right along here, and we have lots to do. I'm going to share with you a brief update of what's going on in terms of district happenings. As you know, but I just want to reiterate that with a team effort approach that included over 800 stakeholders, we came up with a return to school, road back to school framework for the Acorber Township School District, and I'd like to thank everyone who participated in that process. We, as a district, recognize that this plan may not appease all. However, it does meet the government and the New Jersey Department of Education mandates, as well as guidelines for capacity and social distancing. And it gives her parents a choice, whether to choose a hybrid, a learning experience for their child, or a virtual, totally virtual, learning experience for their child. As you know, we are considered a very large school district, and we have a plan that's been put together amid unclear guidance and changing circumstances, and I will admit to you that this whole process has been challenging, to say the least. I'd like to thank the stakeholders who raised questions. Your inquiries allowed us to better clarify our plan and reminded us of some things that maybe we did not cover. I'd like to remind everyone that those questions are in our question and answer repository located on our website and are updated as we move forward and as we receive more of your great questions. This leads me to a survey. This past week, a survey was sent out to parents to glean information regarding their commitment to that hybrid learning experience, which would be all virtual on Monday, an AA group on Tuesday and Wednesday, and what we call BB group on Thursday and Friday. Also, in this survey, you had the opportunity to pick 100% virtual, whether or not you're going to use our transportation, and some questions about technology. I do want everyone to know that it's invital that this survey is filled out for your child. One survey per child in the household, because we have to get to scheduling, and that's scheduling of our students and our teachers. So it's vital that you participate in this survey. At the moment, we have 6,918 responses, which I think we did some work today, you know, over the last couple of days to get the message out, and we're getting closer to over the, to close to the 7,300 that we need. So we are still a little short. As I said today, we sent another reminder, sent a phone call to parents who did not respond to the survey. So with technology, we were able to sort who those parents were, and again, I stress the importance of filling out. I apologize, there was a little glitch. You might have received a couple of phone calls, and you might have received a phone call to fill out a survey, where everybody had your survey, but we got to the bottom of that, and we've answered the emails that we received. I remind folks that the question and answer link in the framework is in the survey, in case you have any questions, and you're joining us a little late in terms of our journey here, and that feel free to email the Acorber Township School District with your questions. I do want to remind folks that sometimes it takes a little longer for those questions to get to the have to go, because it goes through a district site, and they have to be sorted out by technology. And I also want to remind folks, if you're trying to get in touch with me, while there is an O in Gruccio, there is no O in Gruccio in my email address. So do tune into the district website for information. Just wanted to let you know the things we are doing now. We have started educating our parents and our students through PSAs. These public service announcements have been pushed out on our social media sites and our website, and we will continue to do through this throughout our processing, process of opening schools. We're also sharing an opportunity for parents in grades K to 8 to use the tool of MobiMax, which is featuring back-to-school skills for our students. A little refresher, and I think it's a great idea. So I encourage parents to tune into MobiMax to get your students ready for back-to-school. We're also in the process of registration for preschool and our kindergarten, and tonight, it's just what I want to share, because this was a question, on the agenda, our 2021 school district calendar is on the agenda for change, and this means we are moving all our professional learning days throughout the school year to the beginning of September, and it moves the student's start date to September 8th. I want to remind everybody that while this framework has been decided, there are still many moving parts and pieces each and every day. We are faced with questions, we come up with ideas, and as I always say, the road back has many roadblocks. We are taking feedback and suggestions, and currently, I want to share that we are evaluating our, through our special ed department and supervisors, and considering making some relevant changes to meet more of the needs of our special education students. I also want to share that, and I'm really liking the high school proposal that I received today, to allow all seniors to drive. And it makes sense, because if we're bringing in half the students on the AA schedule, then those parking spots could surely be shared with the students coming in on the BB schedule. But I want to remind all students and parents that terms and conditions will be shared by the high school principal, and they need to be met in order to drive to school. So, and also know that with the caveat that if we return to normalcy, that we go back to the certain folks that applied and were approved to drive. So because we're in the COVID situation, and we have this return to school framework, it was proposed by the high school administration, and I like it. So I wanted to share those updates with you, and to let you know that our door is open, and we take suggestions, and I know we're working hard answering those questions and adding them to our question and answer repository. So with that, Mr. Castellano, that is my update, and I'll turn the meeting over to you. Actually, I can't. You know why? Because Mr. Santilli has to give us a report on HIV, so my bad there, but.
Well, that's perfect.
I'll be right back in a second.
Let me ask you a quick question, if I might, though. I like the idea of the seniors, we talked about that, driving, and we talked about that at our prior meeting. Will we need a policy change, though, to accommodate that? I'm kind of remembering we made.
We have the ability for the superintendent to bend any policies.
So based on that.
Based on exceptions, so this would be a great example of that.
Just wanted to check, make sure we're, you know, covered. Good.
All right, so good, great questions, and making sure we're always in compliance, that's definitely the board's job. But we're going to move on to Mr. Santilli, because as you know, at this time of the year, we give our report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as our SSDS system. So, Mr. Santilli, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. So we are going to just be going over our end-of-the-year or annual analysis of SSDS, as formerly Evers data, and also HIV data as well. Just to kind of give a little background and refresher, in terms of incident categories for SSDS, these are the categories, and some breakdowns in regards to examples of those particular categories that we have to document with the state of New Jersey. This happens twice a year, so we have two reporting periods, and you're going to see that one of the slides does talk about our mid-year discussion in regards to especially HIV. So those are listed here. HIV is a part of that and would be part of SSDS if it was a confirmed case. Incident reporting in 1920, this is a breakdown of all of the different schools. A district-wide is down below in our, in that one row that I've put in light gray color. And then there's also comparative data for 1819, and I've done a two-year analysis of comparative data. Now, one of the things I'm going to point out, and I think it's just probably obvious to everyone here, that because of the circumstances of COVID and our closure, of course, we were virtual. We were not in person from March, basically 16th on. March 16th would have been our last day, and then from that point on. So if we really truly are looking at comparative data, I am going to just be forthcoming with everyone and let you know that, of course, our numbers have decreased, but that's because of the simple fact that the second reporting cycle would have only really covered approximately two and a half months of in-person versus the rest being virtual. So I just wanted to share that as well. So if you're seeing numbers here, yes, they are great, but I definitely, you know, know that that is part of, you know, the fact that we weren't in class or in person. So you can see each column is broken down with the categories that we report on for violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons offense, HIP confirm, and then, of course, our total incidents. And like I said, we have our district-wide data in that particular row. Moving on to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, this again is a piece of our annual presentation, as well as our mid-year report. Just as a friendly reminder, just covering exactly what constitutes harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Just for educational background here, there are three areas that would have to meet the criteria, and all three of these have to be a part of the investigation, have to be confirmed. In addition to that, there needs to be one more of the following, and they're listed there as well. In terms of 1920 HIV cases, this was the mid-year slide I was talking about, and ultimately, in terms of the mid-year cases, this is what was presented. I believe it was in the middle of January at work session, and ultimately, you could see where we fell. I also broke this down with the three-year comparative data during that time. Again, taking a look at the end of the year, from September 1st till June 30th, you can take a look at district totals. Again, you know, the decline in information, or decline in totals here is obvious because of the simple fact that we weren't in person, and ultimately, our numbers had gone down. Again, two and a half months of reporting of in-person time versus being home. In terms of grade level analysis, again, we typically always take a look at the grade level analysis, and one of the main points of doing this, and I started to do this over the last few years, was the simple fact that I wanted to really point out to the community and to the board that when you take a look at those offenders that may be participating or found to be offenders of a harassment and intimidation and bullying confirmed case, it is a very, very small population of our entire student body. I think we've been doing great work in regards to teaching and learning, in regards to making sure that students are aware of the fact that they can report out in regards to if they feel that someone is harassing them or intimidating them. And ultimately, a lot of that is through see something, hear something, say something. Our student assistance counselors do a great job, as well as our guidance counselors and administrators, to make sure that that message gets across. And I can tell you that one of the things that I have seen, there have been, even last year, I believe, more cases that were investigated than previously, and a lot of it has to do with the simple fact that, in reality, they're just more informed, and students are not going to tolerate that type of behavior anymore, so they are being more assertive and proactive. In terms of activities and trainings, these are things that do take place during the course of the year. Even when we went into our closure, I can tell you that some of these things were continuing in that virtual environment to make sure that we were still connecting, not just having some of those virtual meetings with our teams, but also having some of these initiatives take place through character education within our schools. And again, it was happening in a virtual environment. And then, of course, there's the next steps to all of this, and this highlights the commissioners program. One of the things that will also occur next, and we will start to wrap up, actually, for even before next week, will be our district grade, or at least an analysis, and we do a self-assessment, and that's what this information is talking about. So the schools go through, really, a self-assessment is broken down here. It does include these ACOR elements. There are these indicators. Then what we do is during the course of the year, we basically start to document the things that we're doing to accomplish these indicators. So they keep track of that. The anti-bullying specialists keep track of that in regards to each of their schools during the course of the year, and then ultimately, at the end of the year, that information gets placed into the self-assessment category, you know, for HIV grading. And then, of course, it's broken down by a point system, whether you're meeting the requirements or exceeding the requirements, and then we submit the data. The total points you can get are 78 total points, and last year, as a district, this is hard to see, but we received 76 total points. This typically comes out, this is actually 1819 data. This typically takes an entire year to then be, you know, really asserted and sent back to the districts, and then we post it on our district website. The next steps, like I said, we would have board approval of the self-assessment, and then also, you could take a look at our year comparative data from year to year. Last year was 76 out of 78, and we're anticipating being in that same ballpark again this year in regards to our reporting. So that concludes our report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santilli. Any questions on our HIV report from board members? Okay, hearing seen none. We're going to move on into finance and operations, and I don't believe we've had a committee report due to everything, committee meeting, rather, due to all that's been going on, but I'll see if we have a report from either our chair or from Shandra on finance and operations for this evening.
I don't have a report to give, but I do want to comment on Ms. Anaya and the time that she has spent preparing different, our new budget, not, I shouldn't say new budget, some of the things that we need to discuss. They were all to be full board discussions, so therefore, there was no meeting needed. But I do want to commend you, Ms. Anaya.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. And she's right. When we contemplated having a meeting this month, I felt it was more appropriate, since the biggest update was the budget, to have a full board meeting, not necessarily committee meeting. So on this agenda, we'll talk about the action items first. Simple, one is a capital reserve withdrawal for above-ground tank, underground storage tank. You've heard it before. We finally got all of our ducks in a row with the proposals. We have two different vendors, one for the installation process and one for the compliance DEPP. So that is on there for action this time around. The biggest conversation point, I guess, is going to be the resolution for adopting a plan to how our budget's going to look with revised state aid. The guidance from the state said you can do several things. You can reduce appropriations, which is what we did. You can offset and use what, you know, the excess surplus or the savings account, we've spoken about before, as an option. You can also use your maintenance reserve or your emergency reserve. And if you remember, in June, we asked for a resolution to say that I wanted to have the resolution approved to allow us the flexibility that if we had to use an emergency reserve, we had a certain dollar amount approved to help offset these cuts. After scouring the budget and looking at different things, because we've been closed this whole time, false sports being in question, we were able to come up with some savings without having to use reserves or having to use our savings. So on the actual resolution, there's an attachment, and hopefully you guys had a chance to review it. With the itemized lines, basically, we have to approve a plan today as a board. I have to send the resolution up to the county office, along with the lines that are changing and a brief rationale. So that's what I used as an attachment, is basically what I would send up to the state. That is a big talking point. I know we had some board questions after reviewing the agenda over the weekend, but nothing was very specific, so I guess at this point, we'll open up for questions on that item, and then I'll continue with the rest of the agenda.
Sure.
Anybody have anything specific to that resolution?
Board members specific?
I have a question.
Okay. How are we reducing our health insurance, dental, and I think it was RX premiums? I
guess it's the premiums that you were talking about?
Yes. So one here, you'll see, I'm going to pull up the line items specifically, one second here. So they are, so health insurance, it's an administrative fee reduction. So Horizon notified us in the summer that said, usually you have, say, your administrative fee is 2% of your claims. They said, you know what, we're going to reduce our administrative fee. I think it was a 0.5% reduction, which came to $20,000. Prescription came down with their premiums. It was originally a flat renewal. They came back with a percent and a half reduction. Dental is giving us money back. They said they're just flat out writing a check. It was three months and 30% of three months premium, and that's how that was calculated, $81,000. So when we knew we were getting some reductions in our budget, I went back, you'll see several things in here, that I went back and said, okay, especially with lost experience this past spring, we knew that we were able to have some monies given back. Same thing with our JIF insurance. It's our liability insurance, workers' comp, vehicles, all of that. They came back and said they're giving back a percentage of premiums, so that's what those lines are in there. Any other questions about the descriptors of the line items?
Are the items, is it fair to say that the majority of items are savings from our current year that we were able to move forward?
That is correct. It's from the 2021 budget, specific to these line items, specific to these rationales. Basically, somebody asked briefly earlier, I hope no jobs were cut. No jobs were cut. Everything in person, our lines, salary, or specifically breakage from retirement. We didn't even do what we normally would do, like, hey, we're not going to fill this position. We haven't gotten to that level of them, you know, if we want to get there. We basically, with a lot of breakage, a lot of supplies, we talked about consumables as a district philosophy. With us being closed so much of last year, if you're used to using so much paper and pencils and staples, you didn't use, you know, four months out of the year. So this year, instead of cutting 40%, we just had 25%, figuring that was a reasonable estimate to cut supplies for consumables, and that was district-wide, not even just teachers. It was the guidance department, the transportation department, it was all over. Summer runs, we didn't have summer runs, so that was an easy cut. The reconfiguration with transportation, which we proposed as part of our transition plan, was in there as well, because we were able to restructure their salaries. Overall, that's the video, but basically, it's all 2021. We purchased some things in the spring. We took summer professional development. Usually, it's a very, very hot, heavy item. We had more time in the spring, and supervisors had the time to kind of lead that a little bit differently, where they had recommendations and then had teachers' input, where normally it would be 100% teachers bringing it back to the supervisor. So we just structured things a little bit differently this past spring to help us with this, so we can offset. Our grants came in a little higher than anticipated, ESSA as well as IDEA, so that helped. So, yay, we got there, guys. Huge, huge task, but we got there. Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Bird?
Thank you. So with the consumables, I just want to confirm that I understand. So instead of cutting, say, 40%, like you said, you were able to skim 25%. Is that of, like, the teacher's classroom order? Is that 25% that you're talking about?
So it's classroom teacher order, as well as a library supplies, as an example. So the library department would normally buy so much in laminate films, so much in, you know, whatever they may have needed to run their department, so it's department as well as teacher supplies, yes.
Okay.
And we did say, and there are some areas like nursing, we have to give money back, because we have to get PPE, and we have to do things. So we are getting what they need. It was just a matter of, as a standard for the district philosophically, you said, start with 25% of a cut, and if anybody needs tweaking, we'll do that.
Okay, so the nursing line item, that is going to be replenished, because I did notice that it was cut, and that seemed odd with, obviously, all the added expenses that nurses have to.
So we didn't charge any PPE to nursing supplies. It all went to custodial supplies. So although they are getting everything that they need, it gloves, gowns, and everything, their account was still cut, because I'm using all custodial supplies to track it better for, like, when I want to go for re-fee my reimbursement, it's all in one location. And custodial supplies being the hub of all PPE that will be distributed, it's just where everything's being charged right now. So their line, it looks like it's cut, but they got everything that they need, gowns, shields, masks, and everything.
Well, great job.
Thank you.
Yes, Shandra, I want to thank you. I know, you know, we had many moments of nail biting and teeth crunching and, oh my God, moments, but it worked out. Thank goodness, you know, we pinched. We went and we made relevant cuts, if you will, but I'm also grateful for, you know, prescription dental JIF, for all those folks giving back and working with us. So if anybody's listening in from those areas, we appreciate you for looking out for us and being reasonable in this time of unreason. So thank you. Thank you to everybody that contributed to it, and I'm glad we're at this place, and I'm happy everyone understands it is the process, and as we move forward, we are balanced right now.
Yes, thank you. If there's no other questions in that particular resolution, I'll continue with my agenda highlights.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Sure.
I'm being told that there's a problem with our feed. Are we able to check it?
Yeah, I'm watching it. I'm watching it right now.
We're fine? Okay. Very good. All right, Mia, let's go ahead on.
Thank you. So, moving on to the agenda, we have our monthly, we have bills payments, 6421, add a district travel request. There is no financial reports. Usually, we did two months last month, and we'll be proceeding with the next. September's update's going to be a big one. It'll have a closer shakeout of the 1920 school year now that all the final bills have come in, so that'll be a nice update for the September meeting.
Mr. President, I just have a question on the bills. I don't know if this is the time, or?
Go for it.
Can I just, yes?
I'll look at that.
Yeah. I did submit it in with my questions, but I, on email, but I hadn't gotten a response back. I looked at a invoice, number 2698, for the high school gym floor maintenance, for $47,000. Is this something that's absolutely necessary, since the building's been closed since March? Could you tell me more about that PO number, PO number 10007 and that invoice?
Yeah, first of all, I want to apologize. We did see that question, but I'm not sure why it didn't make the list to them.
It didn't make it to our shared, we have a shared document. I don't know why either. I told everybody that.
Yeah, I do remember seeing that, because we did discuss it. We didn't put it in writing in chat.
Okay, thanks.
So we did discuss this, so I'll give you that answer. So basically, we, a few months back, approved the refinishing of the gym floor, and that was actually on 6421, it came up in a discussion like this. It's actually, our gym floors usually go on a rotation basis three to five years. I think I've been close to nine years since we've done our high school gym, as well as updating the logo. So although the schools are closed, it was well overdue to be refitted, stripped all the way down, refinished the wood, and then refinished with polish. So it was a big job that usually is every three to five years, but it had been close to nine.
So does this complete, then, this $47,000?
This is a payment for what you already approved to get work done, so you approved it.
All right, so this work would have had to been done anyway, is what we're saying.
Correct. It's one of our maintenance, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify that, because I didn't get your email, but thank you. Okay. All right, appreciate it.
So the rest of it is pretty standard things. I'll just close out the update with, every Friday, the board gets the agenda, and then they submit questions, and I'll highlight the questions we did respond to. So the question came up, we did an update for our transportation department and the transition plan and where we are as a department, and it does say, the question was, you know, equipment purchase, is 15 buses ready for September of 2021? And just a point of clarification, that was in total, but there are six buses that we received just this month that were just ready for September of 2020, which you guys approved back in the fall, and those are all mini, we're calling mini buses, they're for special ed runs specifically, and we were able to bring in the runs in order to use that equipment right away. The other pieces of equipment were approved, released purchase, and that order has just been placed, and will actually be delivered in the spring. So it's kind of like a department update, saying, hey, since the transition, we've added 15 buses to the fleet, but it wasn't necessarily all 15 for next September. So there's just a clarification there. We have bills list. Another question that came up is charter school payments. We pay charter schools once a month, usually at the close of the month. However, we have a specific charter school who wants us to follow the state mandated timetable, and with that, we have to then have authorization from the board to approve payments that may be after a board meeting, but before the next board meeting. So the month of September being approved on this bills list is due September 8th, 15th, and 22nd in portions, and we do actually cut separate checks for each of those dates, and we'll be releasing it at a time. So it's not a prepayment, you know, authorization is for now to get board approval. So it's not a prepayment, you know, authorization is for now, to get board approval, but it's not released yet. The last update I have is related to just comments we've received, and because we went out for proposal for photographer, there's been a lot of questions, so I just wanted to clarify some moments, some things on that. So one, public service announcement, please remember to have your senior photo scheduled ASAP. Barksdale School portraits will be at the high school from August seventeenth to twenty-eighth, and appointments can be made online at barksdalephoto.com. As another reminder, we asked for proposals to be submitted to be our school photographer. We gave out eight packets to interested parties, and we have three respondents, Barksdale, Lifetouch, and Vasetti. Students always have the option to take senior portraits with a photographer of their choice, but they will be responsible for making those arrangements. So there's a lot of questions we've been receiving on our prior vendor, and I just wanted to give that update on that. I think I covered everything from my area. Any questions on finance? Okay, thank you. I do have two action items, Mr. Castellano.
Is, are there any board, any further board questions on the finance and ops? I just, I just wanted to make sure, I know there's been a lot of conversation out there. Yes, Olympic did very good work for us for many, many years.
Yes.
But Olympic chose to resign.
Correct, and they did not submit a proposal, that's correct.
So I just want everybody to be clear about that. All right, so seeing no more comments, then, we do need a motion on five point two and five point three.
This is Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
I will second it, Mrs. Sullivan.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Delabarka?
Ms. Delabarka says yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all for that, and thank you, Chandra, and our whole administration for, for the very hard work on our budget. Continuing, continuing hard work. So we're going to move to curriculum. I don't believe there was a committee here, meeting rather, but I'm going to ask either if our chair or administration has any items to update us on this evening.
Mr. Santilli, do you have anything you want to update the board on?
Yes, so I did send out an email to the curriculum committee, and it was just on two updates. One is going to be for action, district curriculum, typical protocol moving forward, but district curriculum will of course be approved for next week. And then also, just an FYI, an update on what Dr. Rucci already spoke to earlier in regards to our back, our summer back-to-school skills builder through MobiMax, and just really encouraging parents at home to take advantage. If you are a student that was in grades K through eight in a nineteen-twenty school year, you're able to go into MobiMax and, you know, work on those skills, just to kind of get, you know, kind of brush off the cobwebs, get back acclimated, based on, on where we're going to head in September with a hybrid or virtual learning. So those are the two minor updates, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. Questions?
It says curriculum for twenty twenty-one. Are you going to attach that to next week's agenda, or?
The curriculum, the district curriculum will, and I believe the way we did it last year was, the curriculum is so expansive that we wouldn't be attaching each individual curriculum, but the curriculum is on the district website. So we'll be able, you know, and if you need assistance, we can certainly guide you in where to access those different, those different grade levels and content areas.
So for, for next week, before we vote on it, we'll get, we'll get a link, perhaps? Is that how we'll do it?
Yep, yeah, I can send one out, absolutely.
Very good. Okay, any other questions in the area of curriculum? All right, we're going to move on to personnel. I'm going to ask Dr. Charlton if he has anything to update us on in public session.
Thank you, Mr. President. In executive thing, we talked about some confidential matters, but also an internal form that is part of our personnel process that needed updating after many years, and also the final push of the summer for the onboarding process for our new staff, which is very much in full swing right now, and that is why we will be taking action tonight in work session, and we'll be looking at items seven point two through seven point six and take action.
Very good. Are there any questions? Board members? All right, so then we are going to move forward with some action, so I'm going to ask for a motion on seven point two through seven point six, please.
Motion.
Second.
Solagi, Mrs. Sullivan, any discussion? May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. And before we move into policy, I'm just going to ask everyone, I know this is a brave new world we're in, we have these masks, so everyone, please try to talk directly into your mics so that it gets picked up, so the folks at home can hear what we're saying, and so it can be recorded for broadcast. All right, so we're going to move into policy. We had a very productive policy meeting, all, well, primarily focused on road back, so I'm going to turn that over to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, October, excuse me, October, ooh, I went way back, pre-pandemic, I'm sorry. Oh, boy. On Thursday, August sixth, two thousand twenty, the members of the policy committee met virtually to discuss policy agenda items presented at the virtual meeting with Mr. Santilli, Dr. Hery, Mrs. Amy Elko, Amy Howe Elko, Mr. Castellano, Mrs. Byrd, myself participated, and the following policies and discussions took place at the meeting. The policy committee reviewed twelve policies, let me say that again, say it again, twelve policies and regulations that will require board approval. Some of the, some of the policies and regulations were from the most recent Strauss estimated mandated policy alerts, while others were related to, to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And the New Jersey Department of Education, the road back. It is recommended, it was the recommendation of the committee that action is taken on all policies and regulations at both work sessions and regular board meetings during the month of August. Policy and regulations related to mandated Strauss estimated policy alerts were reviewed and discussed as follows. Policy number sixty-one twenty-two, reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. Policy and regulation number fifty-three thirty, administration of medication. Policy eighty-two ten, school year. Policy eighty-two twenty, school day. Policy eighty-four sixty-two, reporting potentially missing or abused children. Policy and regulation number fifteen eighty-two, domestic violence. Policy number seven seventy-two forty-three, supervision of construction. Policies related to mandated pandemic response and the New Jersey Department of Education road back were reviewed and discussed as well, which included policy number sixteen forty-nine, Federal Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Policy number sixteen forty-eight, Start and Recovery Plan. Also, policy number sixteen forty-eight point zero-two, which was remote learning options for families. Also, regulation seventy-five ten, use of facilities, was discussed as, as the request of a board member. The application procedure, insurance rules, and categories for, for you, for use were discussed. So we did have a busy, long meeting, but we made, we had fun during our meeting. We made it fun. And I did, I did start the meeting off with stating that because of the times that we're in right now, talked about, you know, putting the COVID-related alerts and regulations in the forefront of our policy meetings, and also that we are continuing with the, allowing the, the flexibility with the policies as far as with the superintendent. And I just would state that if there's any questions, concerns from board members in reference to any changes, that they could either, you know, of course, contact the superintendent or the board president, but also just know that I'm, I am in favor of us having the flexibility at this time, just due to the circumstances, and that we can revisit, you know, when things get a little bit back to normal, I think we can revisit that. So I just wanted the board members to know that I do, I hear you, but I also think that this time is, is necessary. And that was it. And I also want to say it was nice we had Dr. Hery and Mr. Santilli at the meeting, so it was, we had a good time.
I agree.
Yes. You made the, you made the meeting, Dr. Hery.
Made it by.
Huh? Oh, no. I mean, you made it fun, yes. But you did make it, yes, he did, he had trouble getting on, he drove over, I didn't tell him too much, but he drove over to the office to get online because he wasn't able to get on at home, so we appreciate your dedication.
My pleasure, thank you.
Very good. Anything, administration, that you'd want to add on to that?
I think Mrs. Gilbert Floyd has, has covered all the bases, thank you.
Any board member questions on our policy?
Yeah, this is Mr. Price, I just have a quick question, and I, I believe that Tamika did answer it, as far as the facilities news, I appreciate you looking into that.
Absolutely.
And the other thing was the social media policy, district-wide social media, media policy.
And, and you know, I do, I apologize that wasn't on there, but?
We want to look into that a lot.
But we did, that was also, and I apologize it wasn't on here, but we did discuss, and I did, I brought up the situation that kind of sparked the conversation in reference to, in which the information was put on the website and knowing who, you know, who puts out what information, so that we know that if someone says something with the district face on it, that it's something that we want portrayed about us as a district, that's in a positive way, even if it's, you know?
Okay, so that's, that's a work in progress.
Yes, sir, yep.
We're going to continue on that. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, we absolutely need a district social media policy, and we will have one. Okay.
Oh, and I just wanted to add real quick, I didn't discuss it on this particular meeting because I did say we were going to be, you know, we need to focus on COVID-related policies because there's, there's a lot more coming up, and Mr. Santilli said there's more coming, right, Mr. Santilli?
I anticipate.
Anticipate more, okay. But I, you know, the, I didn't want anyone to think that I forgot about the citizens' advisory policy, that's one that I'm passionate about as well, so, and that wasn't on here either, so I just want you to know I didn't forget about you. That's it.
Okay, very good, thank you for that. So there's a number of items on new business, I don't know, Doc, if you have some to speak to, I'd like to speak briefly on nine point five, but I'll let you go ahead first.
Okay, so looking at the, the agenda here, we went over the SSDS and HIV. The superintendent permission for hire would be after our last board meeting in August, as we do every year, to have the ability for those last-minute hires, and then have them be approved retroactive, as, as we have done in the past. Pete, you're going to speak to nine five, the mission statement for the district, I said as long as I'm here, this is it, embrace, engage, educate. It works, in every interview we have, in every interview that I've had with final candidates, I ask them if they know it. It's important to me, it needs to be important to them in everything that they do and say when they're dealing with parents and teaching students. Regarding our district learning goals, we'll get them in writing for you, but they're not going to change much as well, because we still have to have all students achieving one hundred percent, so we'll work our hardest to get to that place. And I told you, change doesn't happen overnight, it takes time. And regarding a positive climate and culture and building community partnerships, I think we can't go wrong in those areas. So I'll give you more objectives and details there, but for the most part, that's the overall site in that. And then the others, district mentoring plan, and professional development plan, and school safety and security plan. If you want to know more information about that, I know Dr. Charlton has seven and eight that he's responsible for, and Mr. Santilli's responsible, along with Dr. Hery, for the school safety and security plan. So you could go ahead with nine five, Mr. Castellano.
Okay, very good, and, and I, I also wanted to add in terms of calendar, keep in mind, everyone, board members, administration, we may very well need to add more additional meetings. You know, as we've, we've all said, things change daily, sometimes hourly, guidance and requirements that are placed on us, and we need to be flexible and be ready to meet. On the subject of board goals, I'm going to make a suggestion to the board that for the coming twenty twenty-one, that our only additional board goal is to successfully resume school. Our, our road back plan, and in whatever, whatever form that we ultimately do successfully begin school, I would like to suggest that that be our only additional board goal, because I think that's our primary focus. So I want to see if there's any, any feedback on that. So my suggestion is we are going to leave the four that we have in place, we'll update them as continuing, and then we will add an additional goal that's based on road back and successfully returning to school. And I've asked if it's okay with, if board members are all right with that approach, I've asked Mrs. Byrd if she would write that goal up for us. Any feedback? I, I think that's job one right now.
I agree.
Okay, so I'm going to, we'll take that as a yes, and I thank Mrs. Byrd for that now. As we get into the year, and, and let's all hope and pray, if, if, you know, this situation passes, and we want to look at additional board goals as we're, as we move into twenty twenty-one, by all means, we can, we can add them at that time. But, so we'll proceed that way, and I think we can probably adopt them for, for next Tuesday, is that doable? Good.
And Mr. President, I just wanted to say that we have to vote on, we have action for eight point one?
Yeah, yep.
I'm sorry, what, did you, were you going to wait? I apologize.
No, no, yeah, I just wanted to get, you know?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, no, 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 you're good.
Okay.
I'm glad, you, you, keep, keep me straight here, because?
Oh, listen, I'm trying to?
You know, I just, you know, I have my water here, I, I have, I have my Germex, I just want to make sure I'm not, you know?
You, you are fine, listen.
Make sure I'm straight, because, you know, it's tough up here.
You're not alone.
It's tough up here, you know?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to then ask for a motion on eight point two through eight point one to our policy items for tonight.
Motion, Ms. Floyd?
Mrs. Byrd, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we've covered everything. Board calendar, again, please be ready to be flexible, everyone. We, New Jersey school boards, we did have a county meeting last night, if there's anything you might want to report out on that?
Thank you, Mr. President, for mentioning it. Yes, we had a, a pretty good meeting last night, there were about thirty-some people there from around the county, and the New Jersey school board representatives did a good job of bringing us up to date of what's going on around the state. Truthfully, the bulk of the state is as confused as we are, so we're trying very hard to work together and, and move forward, but school boards has been very helpful. And I think that's about all we did last night, we did. And I think that's about all we did last night, we did, oh, the biggest point, I know Pete brought it up to me earlier, the, they were talking about Workshop 2020, it's in October, three days in October, all virtual. The program sounded very good to me last night, what they're planning, some really innovative stuff, and it sounds like it'll be well-attended, we hope, and they're even, even including the children around the state in the evening part of the program, so that different representative groups from, representing children will be available for different programs that we could see. So I guess, John, there's still going to be the same registration process for all of us, and, and hopefully we'll all participate in October, I think it's October twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. And it looks like a good program. So it was a good meeting last night, I'm very proud that, I think, five of us at this particular board were in attendance last night, so that's, I appreciate you being there, and it was a good meeting, and we are going to meet again October fifteenth, I believe was the date we selected for our next virtual meeting. School boards have determined that they will not do in-person meetings until maybe mid-November. So all the school board activities are going to be virtual through at least mid-November, of course, that could be extended depending on how we do things. So our meetings in the fall are virtual, and then maybe there's a December possible meeting, and we'll see how that goes when we get nearer. And the topic has not been determined because there's a lot of discussion at our planning meeting yesterday with the officers from the county, that with the way things are going in the state right now, maybe we should wait till closer, till October before we come up with a, a specific topic because things could change so much by then. But again, thank you all for being there, yes. Do you want me to answer a question?
No, I, I just want to add to that, that the, all the vendors and everything for the administration, all the vendors, everybody that's going to be at the convention, you'll have access to what they're, if you click on a link, you can see exactly what they're presenting and, and different things, and the classes. You won't, I don't believe you get credit for the classes unless you do it in person, the day that it's happening, that you'll have access to watch anything you want.
If you're registered, you provide, you go to that class on that day, you get credit.
Yes.
So that's good.
Yes, but all the other classes-
And there's going to be a huge number of available classes also, so. And Mrs. Byrd, go ahead.
Well, actually, Marita answered the question, thank you, Marita. Um, my question was if you're unable to attend the workshop virtually from the Thursday.
That was the other point that-
Everything will be available.
Mrs. Nalay last night, who was the school board representative, made, the entire three days are going to be recorded and be available for a year, so you can go back anytime and see any program at all. So it's not like in the past when we were in person, you couldn't, couldn't have repeated. This time, everything will be available to everybody even after the conference, so that's great.
So we can split it up amongst board members and watch certain things and share back so that we can, you know, all learn different things if we don't have time to watch three days' work?
Yeah, great idea, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Pete, for giving the opportunity. Very good. Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just make a comment, going back to number eleven, administrative monthly reports, I noticed there was no report for central registration, which would also be attendance. Is there going to be some sort of a change with the reporting process? Maybe somebody could update us on that because it was there before, but it's not there now. So I'm looking for more information on the central registration report under item eleven, the administrative monthly reports. If anybody wanted to comment on that?
I can comment on that, so the, we are reworking on a template for that report. However, typically, as past practice would, would show, there is no report in the month of July and August, so even if you were to look back at previous years, there were never any reports done during those months. However, we are working on a, a new template.
Okay, also, I don't see one for security also.
Yes, so we have not done a report, and over the last, I believe, two months, for a variety of reasons in regards to security.
Okay, I just want a clarification on that, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead to our public comment. I just want to remind everyone of the rules. We are going to ask for a name and address from everyone who calls. Calls are, will be limited to three minutes. We cannot speak about personnel matters or litigation, and it's possible that if a question is very complicated, we may need to get back to you with the answer. Kevin, can you have Jeopardy music for next time?
I could do that, that could be arranged.
Okay, I cover township, public comment, please state your name and address.
My name is Melissa Lauer, L U T R R, my address is 33 South Avenue in Pittman, New Jersey, district code is Oito seven one.
Okay, go ahead with your public comment.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School, I teach each grade English. And it's an experience to us that has adopted the idea that we would have grab-and-go breakfasts this year. I was curious to know as to why they came to the conclusion that we would have grab-and-go breakfasts, knowing that students would have to go back to the classroom, take their masks off, and eat their breakfasts in a small classroom that usually takes them about, having them, remember, years now in home, about kind of fifteen minutes. So I wanted to know if, if possible, we can reevaluate or look at that, I think, I think, considering what students could eat in the classroom, and said, we have a much larger seat, and also it's much more ventilated than the classrooms themselves, so the kids wouldn't have to be on masks for just kind of fifteen minutes while eating their breakfasts in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I, I think, we had a little trouble on the audio. I, I, I think the question was about some flexibility around eating, the students having their breakfast.
Having their breakfast in the, in the cafeteria in a group opposed to-
As opposed to a classroom.
So my question is, Alder Avenue Middle School, the number of students that would participate in the breakfast program? I mean, I know, that, that's not something I'm asking now. I'm just, I'm just a roundabout figure, the school, how many students in Alder Avenue Middle School, maybe, what, a thousand? Something roughly, nine hundred? Eight? Eight hundred children, so this, you could have eighty kids that need to eat breakfast easily, eighty to a hundred children.
It's cohort.
Cohort, but, I mean, what would be?
At this time, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, only because it falls under food service.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I took her comment, and I will look at the difference between eating in a classroom, like she said, taking your mask off ten, fifteen minutes, versus actually doing grab-and-go where they actually sit in the cafeteria, and I think once the data is extrapolated of how many people are going to be here and eligible, I think we will have a plan for that, but as of right now, it is going to be tentatively in the classroom, but more to follow once we actually-
I was just trying to figure out where the question was going because that's all I was doing.
Her question was concerning about them taking their masks off and eating for so long in the classroom setting.
Versus in the cafeteria with their masks off, too, okay.
We hear that, okay, and that's, that's a fair question, and we will look at that. And we certainly want our students to have their breakfast.
Yes, and now we do have another caller, if you're ready.
Yep.
Okay, public comment, please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Terry Alvarada, my address is two oh six West Wood Road, I cover township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I was talking to some of the township teachers because I know some people that were interested in funding some Donors Choose for the teachers of I cover township in Pleasantville. We put in for board approval once a year so that we're able to get projects funded and bring in some special items for the students that we wouldn't be able to afford with the normal budget. And I was told by some of the teachers that the board does not allow teachers to do Donors Choose, so I just wanted to kind of find out if that was true, or maybe they were mistaken, and there's something that, you know, the public can help fund so that the kids can have these additional items.
It was donation of shoes, Mrs. Alvarada? Don't you have shoes? Oh, donate shoes?
No, just items.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Could save money for anything, such as hygiene, or computers, or STEM books, or homicide resources.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that question, Terry. I'm not familiar with that, but I'm going to ask that, that we take a look at it. It's a, a program called Donors Choose.
I will add that I've used Donors Choose in my school district, in my classroom, and I have all new tables and chairs donated from Ashkash Bagash for free to the district for my classroom. So it's this amazing site, so I really hope that we do look at our donation policies and make sure that teachers can utilize this amazing resource.
And I will double-check with Mrs. Halg, I'll go, because this has come up a couple of years ago in administrative meeting. I think where we're stuck on is we can't fundraise as a school, and the teachers can't solicit funds, but I will double-check with her and see what we can work out, okay?
It has been a minute now, Mr. Castellano, with no other callers.
Just want to double-check it. We have voted on policy, correct?
Yes.
Right, okay, just wanted to check on that, okay. And so then, hearing no additional public comment, what I'm going to do is ask if there are questions or comments from board members.
This is Mr. Price, I would just like to comment, it's great to be back in person, I think everything went well. We did the best that we could with our masks and having our water available, and we, we made it, and I'm looking forward to doing it again next week, so that's my comment for this evening. So everybody have a great night, and thank you.
My, my question was in reference to that, so what we did vote for coming to live meetings, was this just for this meeting, or did we do a meeting by meeting, or are we technically from here on out coming to live board meetings from here on out? Because I know with the committee meetings, I would like to plan on keeping the committee meetings virtual. I mean, I would like, so.
So how I think we ought to proceed is for, for our regular, for our full board meetings, I think we ought to continue to poll and do what, you know, go majority, and so I, as, when we got to the end of tonight, I was going to ask if the majority wants to continue, you know, live. I think we should go week to week, or meeting to meeting, based on the circumstances. Whatever the majority wants to do is what we'll do.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense for committees to stay virtual, at least through August, and we reevaluate that. I'll, I'll leave that to the chairs, but are there any strong feelings either way?
I have one, the only feeling I have is that I just, I go back to when we talked about it before we voted, and the purpose of, one of the concerns was, you know, having the public being able to come to the, actually come to the meetings. And, you know, as I look around the room, we're here, but because of the executive order, there are no, there's no one, I mean, they're viewing, but there's no one physically can come to the meeting present with us, you know. I thought that was one of the main purposes. I didn't think that whether or not individuals could, you know, had trouble with the technology or accessing it, or maybe, you know, I didn't think that was, that was just my opinion, that it was a, a need to have to come back live because of the technology, if it was a technology issue with, with board members. I'm not sure if that was one of the, one of the main reasons we wanted to come back. You know, minus the public?
May I make a comment or something, too?
Go ahead, Lou.
I, I certainly had an opinion when we voted the last time. I still feel that when we come back to school in September, and there's children are in school, that was, would have been an appropriate time for us to be in person again. I'm, I'm going to be criticized probably, but that's too bad. And look, coming in tonight and looking around and seeing what we've done tonight, I don't see the big advantageous event that happened tonight, that we were so, it was so wonderful to be here. I love seeing you all, but I have this ugly mask on, it's very uncomfortable, my glasses are being constantly fogged up. I still have trouble speaking clearly or hearing clearly in this room, and maybe that's me, but in my, in, in my situation. I just feel that we were comfortable at home, we could see each other's faces, the public could see our faces, and I just thought that was a better time to continue the virtual meetings, and whatever the vote is, of course, I'll support the vote with the majority, but at the same time, it was, I'm, how do I say this correctly? My, my daughter had a hard time with me coming here tonight. She found out that I was coming in public, and I know everybody, this is my age situation, I couldn't make, not possibly be in a, be in a compromised situation, I'm healthy, I don't have any of those concerns, but, and we've been very restrictive in my family about not seeing each other, I've not seen them in person, my grandchildren, and so forth, and when we do, we have masks on, and we're just keeping distance. So she, she was almost yelling at me, why are you going out in public tonight? And I said, well, I feel obligated to be there, I'm an elected board member, and this is what the majority wanted. I understand Amy's situation, and I appreciate why she is not able to be here tonight. I just feel that what did we really gain tonight would be all of us being here, and the bottom line. I just, the public's not here. That would have been, would have been nice if the public could be in our meeting, but they're not here. And look at all of us with our, you know, virtually, we could see each other. And some of the connectivity maybe was a problem at times, but I think as we went through the few months, it got better, and most of us got used to the computers. That's my comment, and whatever the vote is, the vote is, I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mrs. Byrd.
I agree with what Mr. Delaparka is saying. I think that, you know, we all had different opinions about coming back, not coming back, and things, but I agree that I don't think anything was so earth-shattering tonight to have eighteen people in this room exposed to God only knows what, because, you know, one of us could have it and we don't even know it. You know, we did the safety protocols. You know, we did the safety protocols, and we're raring this, which is fine, we've all adapted to that, but I think that we've all adapted to virtually, holding virtual meetings. And I also think that our teachers have adapted to teaching virtually, our students have adapted to learning virtually, our administration has adapted to doing everything virtually. And I think that we can continue to persevere through the connectivity issues that we're having, that, you know, and continue virtual, because, like you said, and I agree, we didn't really accomplish anything tonight that we wouldn't have accomplished virtually, and to have your daughter so upset because she's very, I mean...
Don't tell I said it, but at the same, the same point.
That's a good daughter, I would say the same thing.
But just thinking about how we went through the procedure of listening to the public again tonight, we still had to wait, just like we were, if we were at home with the virtual, it wasn't like there was an immediate public question coming right up, we still had to wait for the phone call, wait for the time, it was just like we were at virtual time. What was the big advantage of that, even, you know, in this situation?
Mrs. Solagi is next.
Yes, as I'm sitting here and you're all talking, it was a thousand times better seeing you all there for the public. We see you looking at your watch, because they were text messaging me. We want to see everyone for the whole meeting. It's better for the public for you all to be in person. We cannot see faces, only whoever is talking, and if anything is up on the screen, they don't know who is talking. It is so much better than Zoom, please stay in person, and that's from the public.
Can I say, the public, so, and I've asked this question before, when it was brought up, and I said, "How many people, I mean, is it twenty, is it thirty, is it forty?" This is someone who you know personally, texting you to tell you that they appreciate, and I'm glad they do, but I don't know if that's...
This is from Facebook message.
Oh, Facebook, oh, Facebook, the whole, okay.
It's not my phone number.
Facebook, okay, well, I know the connection with Facebook, so, my thing is this. Is there a majority of people in the public that do feel that way? And I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing it. Maybe I'm missing it, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if, I think the public and the board members, before, before we're elect, I mean, we're elected officials, they're stakeholders, but the bottom line is that I think it's a bigger picture here. It's, this is not like, you know, it's a snowstorm, so we're not going to, you know, we're just going to cancel the meeting. It's a global pandemic going on, and I think that people have a lot of concerns about their health, about different things. So the public, I mean, I don't know who, are they with your Facebook, your friends, I'm just...
Yeah, I guess I would just say, if the public had a comment, I wish they had called in with that comment, but...
Okay, I'll say, yeah, open it.
Well, we're, we're kind of... Well, no, I don't want to go out of order, I don't want to get into that practice, but I want to try to take it, who had the next, I think Christie's next, Barb next, Lou after that, one, two, and third.
Thank you, this might be an IT question. If some of our pub, you know, some public members are, you know, having difficulty operating the Google meetings, because they're not Zoom, they're Google, so there is a button on there that you can change to Tile View. So, I guess, IT, what I'm asking is, is there a way, when we're not presenting, you know, a presentation, is there a way to have all of our faces on the screen, and so that people can see us? I don't know if that's a possibility. I change my screen at home, and I can see all board members. So, it's just a button on there, but, you know, it's a learning curve for everyone. I know, I didn't know that the first few times I did it, so, it's this little tiny button, you change it, and you can change the Tile View, see everyone. But you could have it on a setting where the person who talks, all of a sudden, their big face is on the screen, but it's just a matter of changing that setting. But I don't know if IT can do something like that, to help our public see our faces more, so that they know who's speaking. Just a suggestion, or a question.
Is it okay if I add? Yeah, we could put on Tile View, we were just starting out with that view, we could do, it's called Tile View, or we could do Spotlight too, where words speaks becomes the spotlight, unless you're doing a presentation of slideshows. If you were, to go back to Google Meet, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Solagi next, then Mr. Delabarka.
The Township Committee has still been meeting in public, they never stop meeting in public. They have an audience, I don't understand why we can't have the public here at our meetings also. We've been offered to use the community center from the Township Committee, and I think we represent the public. They want to, you know, this is what they're, like, I just got another one.
You, we cannot have more than twenty-five people in a building. I don't know what Township Committee's doing, you know, and I don't know what they're doing. I can't speak for them, but we can't have more than twenty-five people in a building. And I'm going to check with Mrs. Elko, am I correct?
The executive order talks about you can have no more than twenty-five people indoors right now, that's the most recent executive order. I can certainly look to see if there's any exceptions for public meetings, my understanding there was not, but I can certainly look at that issue.
It's not a, it's not a percentage of the room?
The most recent executive order, it used to be a hundred people, or twenty-five percent of a room, and the most recent executive order, which was at the last board meeting, that was reduced, so it can't be more than twenty-five people in a room.
And we talked about that. We discussed that at our last meeting. So Lou, Lou is next.
Just a minor point, I think, how many people, if you look back at our meetings, how many members of the public have actually called in? The largest number we had was when we were debating full day categories, that was huge. Since then, very few, really, when you think of the public out there, that's what's being, paying attention or watching us, have called in. So I'm concerned about that, that we're really not getting a big response from the public at our meetings.
Mrs. Bird, sorry.
And, you know, this might be a little off-topic, but it was brought up a little bit before. You know, people may comment on Facebook, but they do not represent all of Egg Harbor Township. Some people have the loudest voices on social media, but doesn't mean that they represent our community's opinion as a whole. So, while we could all find, you know, comments, that's fine, it doesn't mean we don't address them, absolutely. Like tonight, you brought that up, we discussed the Tile View. There are solutions to problems through the discussion. However, we have to make sure, as community members, elected officials, that we do not take the opinions of a few who happen to post all day long as the opinion of this community. That may be my opinion, I don't know if anyone else shares it, but I find that Facebook is not where I go to get my information.
Very fair point.
Lou?
Well, if they were, if they were text messaging me, I wouldn't be getting messages, because I had no service anywhere. So, that's why that's being used, well, I'm just saying.
I was just going to say that, you know, social media can be a great thing, and it can be, you know, a terrible thing, you know, it depends which end of the message, or if you're the topic of discussion. And I think that, I think that it's very nice for, like, how the Township Committee is, you know, still having their meetings, I think that's, I think that's awesome. I think that we're in one town, but we just, we're two, two separate, we're in the same town, but we're, you know, the Board Education, and then there's the Township Committee. So, I think we can't really compare ourselves to them, or, you know, you know, follow their lead, or vice versa, they may not follow our lead. And they think that it was ridiculous that we, I'm not saying they said that, but they could say, "Why are they having virtual meetings?" But that's the choice in the vote, you know, the direction we went in. And I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the nail, the driving nail or force is behind whether we do, whether we do or don't. I'm not really sure what the main issue is of if we do continue to meet virtually, how that would be a negative. I'm just not really sure, I don't want it to be that we're not listening to the public, but I do agree that we need to look at if there's, you know, how many people are having this issue or this concern. Because I'm not getting a lot of people saying to me, you know, "The board meeting is not, is hard to understand." I'm just not, I'm not getting that feedback from people maybe in my circle, so, you know, like I said, Ms. Solagi's getting that, and her feedback in her circle. All of the board members, have you been getting feedback from the public in your circles? Have you been seeing things on Facebook? I know we have, like, you know, different sites that are based with the community of Egg Harbor Township, community members where they can express their opinion and different things. I just want to know, has anybody else had that same issue? Because if, you know, if it's a major, major issue, but I also think the public would understand that. If we didn't meet a person, that wouldn't be, because we don't care about their thoughts, it would just be because of what's going on right now, health-wise.
I can tell you that the feedback that I get just relates to the work that we're doing, and that it's appreciated. I haven't had anyone comment on the mode or the method of our meeting, either way.
But I think the people that Ms. Solagi's talking about, I think they're important, they're community members, and I think maybe if we could support them too, if they need assistance with anything, or if we can help them. I mean, I don't want to disregard their, you know, whether it's one person, or whether it's a hundred and fifty people.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest this, that, you know, again, we go meeting by meeting, and we go by the majority, and keep in mind that, you know, we held this meeting publicly, but members had the option of participating virtually. So, I want to reemphasize that.
But I, I, yes, but I also think that, after what Mr. Delabarka said, he felt obligated.
Just, just let me finish, okay. So, what I'm going to propose then is, you know, we just, we take a straw vote, again. So we'll just, and majority will rule, you know, as we have. So, unless there's any... Sure?
Thank you, before we do our straw poll, because we obviously want to address our community's concerns, and how the, you know, if this is working for them, not working for them, what they want to see from the board as a whole, can we survey our community? Can, you know, maybe not this week, next week, obviously, we have way bigger fish to fry to get our students back into school, but maybe we can send out a survey, "How are we doing?" survey, and "Do you like the format?" Any suggestions, you know? So maybe vote straw poll tonight, but with the idea that we'll gather more information, so that we can make a decision that serves our community best.
I think that's fine. I think that's fine. Okay, and again, you know, the most important thing is that we're getting the job done, and that we work together. I mean, I think this is becoming sort of a point of contention that we really don't need to have. Let's, let's just come together and work together, all right? So, I'm going to suggest a straw poll, I'm going to have Ms. Anaya just go down the roster. So for next week, will next week be here in person, or will next week be home virtual, back to our Google Meet?
The options will be, when I call your name, in person or virtual, okay? Mr. Delabarka?
Virtual.
Mr. Ellis has left the meeting, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Virtual.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, live, I believe that we should stay with live, because I did better personally tonight, I could hear everything better, and I had a better internet connection, I had difficulties at home with my internet, so, for me, it worked out, and I prefer to continue live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, in person, live. Mrs. Summer also left the meeting. Mrs. Solagi?
Live.
Mrs. Bird?
Virtual.
And Mr. Castellano?
I prefer in person.
Okay, it's four, three, for this seven member today, so I don't know if you needed five, or if you were going to go by majority today.
Majority is four, three, so be four.
So, live.
So, but again, if, if, and now, we're going to go week, meeting by meeting, and if board members are not comfortable, you can participate virtually. All right? Okay, anything else from our administration?
No, we're good, thank you.
All right.
Dr. Harry.
Dr. Harry's hand is up.
Just very briefly, Mr. Castellano and Dr. Crucio, I want to publicly and personally thank you, you and the board and its general membership for providing me the opportunity to come back and serve the school district. This is exceptionally challenging time, nothing that has ever prepared me in all my other administrative positions to respond to, but this is a wonderful group of individuals that I've had the opportunity to work with in years past, and certainly now, and I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank you very much for your confidence and trust that you put into my abilities, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, we're lucky to have you back.
And Mr. Castellano, I'll also look at that issue, if anything changes, I will let you know, we can notify the board.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. Okay, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Okay. Acclamation, we are adjourned, thank you all very much for joining us, and we will see you back here next week.